Call this meeting your own. We're going to find more.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly. Holly, aye. Fernwald. Fernwald, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Mac. Mac, aye. Carr. Carr, aye. Cantillo Zelman.
Aye.
Cantillo Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Eight ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. We move on to the presentation of general proceedings.
It should be eight, ready?
Yeah, it should be eight.
I apologize.
Need a motion to approve the city council minutes for the date of July the ninth, 2019, and for the special meeting held on July the sixteenth, 2019. Do you have a motion? Followed by Bellato, second by Alderman, Cantillo Zelman. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus. Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantillo Zelman.
Aye.
Cantillo Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Eight ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Next, we move on to a poll comment.
Your Honor, city council meeting, thank you for a... Oh, excuse me. Name is Thomas Mandraga, live at 13427 Mozart Street. Initially, I was going to talk about the...
Bring the mic up a little bit closer.
Initially, I was going to talk about the third and fourth of July. It was a war zone in my neighborhood, but I'm going to forego that. And I'm going to talk about a few of my friends that passed away this past week. Herman Ruiz, ninety-five years old, over two hundred. And Daniel Riley, ninety-nine years old. And, you know, it was an honor to know Mr. Riley. And I told his family that. He's a longtime teacher, longtime scout master, and a good citizen of the town of Blue Island. I mean, you know, he... You know, I'm glad Blue Island has people like Mr. Riley. He is well distinguished, real, you know, and at the funeral, at the St. Mass, at the St. Benedict's, had a nice backpipe drum group, so forth. But, you know, I was honored. And like I said, I, you know, I was glad, like I said, he's a very patriotic American, legit. And thank you very much for listening to my comments. And Mayor, thank you for being at the picnic for the low-league program at Rockville. Thank you. Have a nice day.
Thank you. Carol DePace Green. And I want to talk about two different issues tonight. Tomorrow, there's going to be a meeting regarding the Blue Island Hospital. And I know that the taxpayers are very concerned, just like I am. The Blue Island Hospital requires a request for safety net status from collective... From the collective group of state and local elected officials demonstrating they are working together in the best interest of Blue Island and the surrounding communities for consideration for safety net status by Governor J.B. Pritzker. If you do not demonstrate in a number of ways that you're working together, that safety net status is not going to be granted. So I don't care what you have to do. You're going to have to put it together, issue press releases, get the collective group of state representatives, state senators, Tammy Duckworth, Bobby Rush. Everybody needs to get on board, and all of them need to be contacting the governor to request the safety net status. Otherwise, the outcome is not going to... It's going to be very poor. To date, no other community in the state of Illinois with... Has been identified that has legal representation at taxpayer expense for alderman trustees and trustees. The Blue Island Restore Party and hired an advisory separate legal counsel for themselves at taxpayer expense. The majority of the aldermen are engaging in repeated patterns and actions not benefiting Blue Island taxpayers. This includes no remorse, no bid contracts, and a combination of activities specifically passing ordinances with errors, providing increased evidence of the pattern of abuse of taxpayers, voters, Blue Island limited taxpayer funds, as evidenced by the July sixteenth, 2019 special meeting vote. Blue Island elected officials and taxpayers need to hear and understand how voting in favor of these two ordinances containing errors, ignoring the municipality's need for transparency, and an effort to change the city form of government resulted in the two current Open Meeting Act complaints. The initial Judiciary Committee meeting began with a prepared written ordinance for discussion and muscling through two ordinances with errors. A majority group of the Blue Island aldermen currently want to improperly change Blue Island City Council's procedures, limit discussion, limit discourse, and limit freedom. This is not what democracy or good government and transparency looks like. Blue Island deserves better. Investigators need to focus and expand their investigation into how these Open Meeting Act violations were orchestrated and the way in which Blue Island corruption appears to be expanding. The truth must be told, and changing Blue Island's municipal form of government requires a ballot referendum in order to change the form of government. Our current Blue Island aldermen have not and do not engage in enough thoughtful discussion in committees or during Blue Island City Council meetings regarding any municipal issues. Blue Island taxpayers, voters, and the public will hear less and less and be less informed about what is actually going on. No doubt that appears to be the way the majority seems to want to run the city of Blue Island. Blue Island city government is required by law to be transparent and open. We must hold all of our Blue Island elected officials accountable. Thank you. Thank you very much. Anyone else? I move on to reported city officials' presentations and resolutions. Under the mayor's announcements again tomorrow, starting at ten a.m., St. Benedict's Church all the way to six p.m. I know there's slots for different people, from elected officials to residents to stakeholders, businessmen, businesswomen, everybody, first responders to speak at that public hearing. Again, that one has been organized by a state representative, Bob Rita. We fully support it. Our main goal, again, we had ours here to try to start out the domino effect back in July the eleventh, here at the East Annex. We had a great turnout. Now, we need the pressure of you as the residents to come out and give the public comment. Right now, I am scheduled around three-thirds to speak on behalf of the city, and hopefully we can convince the board, the ones who control the closure or the opening of that hospital, maintain it open, that they will listen to all of you, more than they listen to the elected officials. They need to listen to the public, to the people who use that hospital. And one of the main things that came out of that meeting on July the eleventh is that fifty thousand-plus people use that emergency room within a given year. And where are they going to go and get assistance? Ingalls, Christ, there's no room. As the professionals stated, at the present time, those two institutions cannot, and I repeat, cannot take over that amount of patients in the ER room. So that hospital across the street must and needs to be... Remain open. Let me move on. Appointment to the police pension board. I have appointed Chief Bernardine Arzab and the reappointment of Tom Walsh. I'm going to deal with concurrence. I need a roll call, please. Go ahead. I'd like to just point out a couple of things for item number two, three, and four. Under our current rules, everything has to go through committee, and we have two options. We could either table and send it to a committee on the chair's choice, whatever committee you want to send it to, or we could suspend the rules and allow these appointments to go through for tonight. I say we suspend just for tonight. So I'd like to make a motion to suspend our rules, sending everything to committee for items number two, three, and four, and then you would need a second. This is a motion, second by Alderman Tom Holly. Any questions? Roll call.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald. Oh, excuse me. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantillo Zelman.
Aye.
Cantillo Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
This is just on the police.
No, this is to suspend the rules.
I'm sorry, aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Now, we go back. For number two, appointment to the police pension board, Chief Bernardine Arzab and the reappointment of Tom Walsh. Need a motion in a second. Motion by Alderman Tom Holly, second by Alderman Donahue. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald. Oh, excuse me. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantillo Zelman.
Aye.
Cantillo Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. The third one is appointment to the fire pension board, Chief Daniel Rita. Just a quick clarification. Who is he replacing? There's two appointments on there now. Former Chief David and Treasurer Bellato are the two mayoral appointees. So who would he be replacing? Do you remember who it is? Okay, I don't... I don't remember which one it was. Okay, well, I'm going to end up stating anybody else. That's fine. But I just was trying to clarify that. Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion. We table this until we can clarify who he's replacing. One second. Motion, second. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
No.
Holly, no. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantillo Zelman.
Aye.
Cantillo Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. The third one's appointment to the fire pension board, Chief Daniel Rita. Just a quick clarification. Who is he replacing? There's two appointments on there now. Former Chief David and Treasurer Bellato are the two mayoral appointees. So who would he be replacing? Do you remember who it is? Okay, I don't... I don't remember which one it was. Okay, well, I'm going to end up stating anybody else. That's fine. But I just was trying to clarify that. Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion. We table this until we can clarify who he's replacing. One second. Motion, second. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald. Oh, excuse me. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantillo Zelman.
Aye.
Cantillo Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
This is just on the police.
No, this is to suspend the rules.
I'm sorry, aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Now, we go back. For number two, appointment to the police pension board, Chief Bernardine Arzab and the reappointment of Tom Walsh. Need a motion in a second. Motion by Alderman Tom Holly, second by Alderman Donahue. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
No.
Holly, no. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantillo Zelman.
Aye.
Cantillo Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. The third one's appointment to the fire pension board, Chief Daniel Rita. Just a quick clarification. Who is he replacing? There's two appointments on there now. Former Chief David and Treasurer Bellato are the two mayoral appointees. So who would he be replacing? Do you remember who it is? Okay, I don't... I don't remember which one it was. Okay, well, I'm going to end up stating anybody else. That's fine. But I just was trying to clarify that. Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion. We table this until we can clarify who he's replacing. One second. Motion, second. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald. Oh, excuse me. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantillo Zelman.
Aye.
Cantillo Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. Next is the mayor's veto message. I am vetoing ordinance number 2019-029 in ordinance amending Title III, Administration of Chapter Thirty, City Council General Provisions, the Code of Blue Island, to establish and the record rules for the public comment in the recording of public meetings. I will not sign said ordinance because I disagree with many of its provisions, particularly the strict limitation to address the council on pending issues. I will gladly work with the Judiciary Committee to prepare an acceptable establishment of rules for public comment and recordings of public meetings. Next, it's regarding... I am not signing Resolution Number 2019-030, a resolution of the city of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, adopting rules of order and procedure for the city council pursuant to Chapter Sixty-Five Illinois Compiled Statutes Five, diagonal three-point-one dash forty dash fifteen of the Illinois Municipal Code, because I disagree, again, with many of its provisions and restrictions, particularly the limitation of the length of time a member of the council is allowed to speak. In the provision allowing for removal of a member of the council if it is determined if he or she is acting in a disorderly manner. Mayor, I have a clarification question. Yes, sir. Thank you. First, regarding veto message, 2019-029. Do we need... For the override for the next meeting, can the clerk just add that to the next city council agenda, or do we need three aldermen to sign it to override?
You can request the clerk to incorporate that.
Randy, can you incorporate?
What's your proper procedure is to be... A motion to reconsider that motion was adopted.
And that would be at the... Our next meeting?
That would be at your next regular meeting.
Two weeks, got it. Thank you. Then my other question, Mayor, is on the resolution. Because you're not signing it, it's automatic. It's going to become law. Is that correct? It is correct. According to what council's telling. Great. Okay. That's just... I just want to be clear. Thank you. City Clerk's business.
Yeah, I have two items this evening, Your Honor. The first one is a motion to approve a block party on Maple Avenue between Hundred Nineteenth and Hundred Twenty Street on July twenty-seventh, 2019, from ten a.m. to ten p.m.
Do we have them... Any motion? Motion by Alderman Clinker. Any second? By Alderman Donahue. Any questions? Roll call.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantillo Zelman.
Aye.
Cantillo Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
This is just on the police.
No, this is to suspend the rules.
I'm sorry, aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Now, we go back. For number two, appointment to the police pension board, Chief Bernardine Arzab and the reappointment of Tom Walsh. Need a motion in a second. Motion by Alderman Tom Holly, second by Alderman Donahue. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
No.
Holly, no. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantillo Zelman.
Aye.
Cantillo Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
This is just on the police.
No, this is to suspend the rules.
I'm sorry, aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Now, we go back. For number two, appointment to the police pension board, Chief Bernardine Arzab and the reappointment of Tom Walsh. Need a motion in a second. Motion by Alderman Tom Holly, second by Alderman Donahue. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Casadus, aye.
Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantillo Zelman.
Aye.
Cantillo Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you. The third one's appointment to the fire pension board, Chief Daniel Rita. Just a quick clarification. Who is he replacing? There's two appointments on there now. Former Chief David and Treasurer Bellato are the two mayoral appointees. So who would he be replacing? Do you remember who it is? Okay, I don't... I don't remember which one it was. Okay, well, that... Okay, I'm going to end up stating anybody else. That's fine. But I just was trying to clarify that. Go ahead. I'd like to make a motion. We table this until we can clarify who he's replacing. One second. Motion, second. Any other questions? Roll call.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Holly.
Aye.
Holly, aye. Fernwald. Oh, excuse me. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantillo Zelman.
Aye.
Now, the next one's appointment to the chief, to the Blue Island Library Borough, Carol DePaes Green. They have a motion by Alderman. Tom Hawley, do I have a second? By Alderman Clinker. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, your honor.
Thank you very much. Next is the mayor's veto message. I can read it as follows. I am vetoing ordinance number 2019-029 in ordinance amending Title III, Administration of Chapter 30, City Council General Provisions, the Code of Blue Island, wanting to establish and the rule, record rules for the public comment in the recording of public meetings. I will not sign said ordinance because I disagree with many of its provisions, particularly the strict limitation to address the council on pending issues. I will gladly work with the Judiciary Committee to prepare an acceptable establishment of rules for public comment and recordings of public meetings. Next, it's regarding, I am not signing Resolution Number 2019-030, a resolution of the City of Blue Island, Cook County, Illinois, adopting rules of order and procedure for the City Council pursuant to Chapter 65 Illinois Compiled Statutes 5, diagonal 3.1-40-15 of the Illinois Municipal Code, because I disagree, again, with many of its provisions and restrictions, particularly the limitation of the time, length of time, a member of the council is allowed to speak, and the provision allowing for removal of a member of the council if it is determined if he or she is acting in a disorderly manner.
Mayor, I have a clarification question.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. First regarding veto message 2019-029, do we need, for the override from the next meeting, can the clerk just add that to the next City Council agenda, or do we need three Aldermen to sign it to add it to override? Randy, can you incorporate?
What's your proper procedure is the motion to reconsider that motion was adopted.
And that would be at the, our next meeting?
That would be at your next regular meeting.
Two weeks, got it, thank you. Then my other, my other question, Mayor, is on the resolution, because you're not signing it, it's automatic, it's going to become, become law, is that correct?
It is, it is correct, according to what council's telling me.
Okay, that's just, I just want to be clear, thank you.
City Clerk's business?
Yeah, I have two items this evening, Your Honor. The first one is a motion to approve a block party on Maple Avenue between 119th and 120th Street on July 27, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Do they have them, any motion? Motion filed by Clinker, any second? By Alderman Donahue, any questions?
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Next, they did a motion to approve a block party on a half a block only, between Canal Street and the alley on Irving Street on August 3, 2019, from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
Do they have a motion? By Alderman Bellato, second by Alderman Cantello Zelman. Any questions? This question from the treasurer, go ahead.
If I recall, Canal Irving is where I used to live?
Correct.
That's one way north from Broadway.
I already signed it. As the property owner, I signed it.
You signed it?
I signed it. It's just our block, that's it.
Canal to the alley, that's it. It's one way north, so if they come out of the alleys, they gotta go south.
If they return that way, huh? Yeah, that's, they're closing off the street.
You guys need to communicate.
Yeah, all right. It's the tenants that are requesting it.
I know, I know.
Okay. Got a motion, got a second? Comments, any other comments? Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, your honor.
Thank you. Any bids?
No bids, your honor.
City Treasurer?
Yes, Your Honor, thank you. Transfer of restricted, non-restricted funds, a total of $65,784.74.
Do they have a motion? They have a motion by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus. Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, your honor.
Thank you.
Motherland Delected, from the Council, preliminary audit started yesterday. They're in there for a couple days. We'll expedite it as best as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. City Attorney?
I have a question. Alderman Carr, she did chair of Municipal Services.
The Chair of Municipal Services.
Is someone representing her?
I'm gonna read them. I'm gonna read them.
You're gonna read the presentation?
Yep. Well, you can read it if you'd like, I'm just gonna read them and it's-
I just didn't know if she was, if someone was here to present her absence. The second point, and I just want to point this out, is with respect to the rules that you adopted, the rules really don't have to be suspended or waived, because your rules indicate that items to be activated by the council are appearing on the agenda, shall be presented by the chairperson of the standing committee having jurisdiction over the matter. Otherwise, with respect to mayoral appointments, no statutory, no standing committee really has jurisdiction over mayoral appointments. There's nothing wrong with suspending your rules from time to time if you want to get things along, okay? So I'll wait for you to present then the resolution.
Is this council?
That's right. We do have a closed session, this evening, but I'll announce it again.
That's fine. Community reports, Community Development Committee.
Thank you, Your Honor. Community Development, we met, and I haven't typed up the minutes yet, it was a short meeting, only three hours. I'll have a lot, once that's all typed up, I'll report that, but I'm reading for the second time into the minutes of the City Council meeting that the Community Development raised the business district amount from a 50% match grant with a cap of $75,000, $7,500 to a 75% match with a cap of $7,500. So, if you know any business owners or property owners within the business district, and they have a $10,000 project, the city will reimburse 7,500 as long as it goes through the proper procedures of the building department and gets permitted. So it's a great incentive, especially for signs and tuck pointing and windows and stuff that can be seen from the street, it'll be covered under this grant as long as it follows the regular building department procedures. So I'm reading into the record again for the second time now, we've raised it from 50%, 50% to 75%. And please encourage anybody you know, any shops you stop into, that you notice anything that might need improvement, let them know, we have this grant and there's actual money in this account that we can rebate to business owners to help them improve their properties along our business district. So that's all, have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Finance Committee?
Thank you, Your Honor. The Finance Committee met yesterday, Monday, July 22nd. Meeting was called to order by Chairman Kevin Donahue at 6:05 p.m. in the East Danex at City Hall. Roll call was taken with Alderman Donahue, Bellato, Clinker, and Alexander present. Alderman Johnson was absent. Also in attendance was Finance Administration Director Michael Marzal, Senior Accountant Janelle Hunt, the Mayor's Administrative Assistant, Marisol Barrera, Dan Prim, and Ron Bishop from Aramark Uniform Services, Otis Gilmore from the Community Insurance Center, Chastity Rosarian, and Miguel Jimenez from Surestaff, and finally, Mr. Alan Stevo. There was no public comment. First item up for consideration before the committee was the approval of the accounts payable. There's a motion to approve both accounts payable, the first for $133,423.47, and the second for $438,119.29, made by Alderman Clinker and seconded by Alderman Alexander. A voice vote was taken, and the accounts payable was approved unanimously. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the two accounts payable on the, the agenda.
There's a motion, there's a second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you.
The next item up for discussion was the approval of the payroll for the pay period ending July 12, 2019, for $367,971.15. There's a motion made by Alderman Bellato and a second made by Alderman Clinker. Voice vote was taken, and the payroll was approved unanimously. I'd like to make a motion to approve the, the payroll.
There's a motion, is there a second? By Alderman Clinker? Any questions? Roll call.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Aye.
Cantello Zelman, aye. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Nine ayes, Your Honor.
Thank you very much.
The, next there's a proposal from Fire Chief Daniel Rita to build out Fire Station Number One. The proposal would take the three vacant offices in the second floor City Hall and convert them into fire station space for administrative offices, a day room and sleeping quarters. There's much discussion regarding this item, and a motion or a second was never made, and the item was declared not passed. Next, the committee heard a presentation from Aramark Uniform Services to provide floor mats, bar towels, and first aid equipment to the city. The initial proposal would cost the city $12,480 a year. After much, much discussion, it was decided to just go with, with the only the first aid program at a cost to the city of $5,200. This would include first aid cabinets at City Hall, the East Danex, the Police Department, the Public Works Garage, the Meadows Golf Club, and the John D. Rita Recreation Center. The cabinets would be fully stocked and checked weekly by Aramark for resupply. There would be an overall savings of $1,200 by switching to Aramark from our current provider of Centas. A motion to approve the first aid program was made by Alderman Clinker and a second was made by Alderman Bellato. Voice vote was taken, and the motion was approved unanimously. Next, there is a brief proposal from Otis Gilmore with the Community Insurance Center. He went over who he is, who his firm is, and what services they provide. The committee then heard a proposal from Surestaff to provide a temporary employee for a short period of time. With sudden and recent turnover in the city's finance department, there's a quick need for a payroll specialist to process payroll. The city is seeking services from Surestaff for one payroll specialist for a period of one month. There's a motion to approve by Alderman Alexander, second by Alderman Clinker. Voice vote was taken, and the motion was approved unanimously. The committee then discussed moving funds in the business district from an account that is currently non-interest bearing to an interest bearing account. Alderman Bellato also provided a quick update on the business district plans. There's a motion made by Alderman Clinker and a second made by Alderman Bellato to move the business district funds to an interest bearing account. Voice vote was taken, and the motion was approved unanimously. Finally, the committee took up an ordinance that would allow the city to impose a local motor fuel tax that would not exceed three cents per gallon. Under the new capital bill that was just approved in Springfield, it allows non-home rural municipalities in Cook County to establish a local motor fuel tax for street and maintenance repairs. There's discussion on this matter, and it was decided all money that would be raised would go to street resurfacing and repair. There's a motion made by Alderman Bellato and a second made by Alderman Alexander. Voice vote was taken, and the motion was approved unanimously. With no further business before the committee, motion to adjourn by Alderman Clinker, second by Alderman Bellato. Voice vote was taken, and the meeting was adjourned at 7:20 p.m. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Public Health and Safety Committee?
Thank you. We met July 16th, last Tuesday. Roll call, Alderman Carr, Johnson, Clinker, and myself. Absent were Alderman Hill and Kazaris. Also present was Chief Rita, Chief Arzab, and Scott Slatterpronger. A motion was made by Alderman Carr to approve June 18's minutes, and second by Alderman Johnson. All were in favor. There was no citizens present. The Fire Department reports for June, they had 255 EMS calls, 124 fire, 17 auto aid, and six mutual aid. Medical reimbursement for June was $24,590.32. To date is $214,813.17. Fire recovery was 963, I'm sorry, 936. And then to date was $11,740.38. False fire alarms for June was $1,100, and to date is $2,700. Calls of interest for the Fire Department, June 5, they had a house fire, 13848 Trumbull and Robbins. They had two house fires on June 17. One was in Robbins, 14214 Grace, and 2946 140th. June 21, house fire, 2505 Orchard, and then June 22 apartment fire, 618 East 146th Street and Dalton. Under old business, there was further discussion of the firehouse buildout. The Historic Society has no say in it due to the work being done inside. Alderman Carr suggested it be sent to Finance Committee. Chief Rita advised that the three lieutenant spots pass through Finance, and will be on the next City Council agenda, which I actually need to make a motion to approve the three lieutenant spots.
Do you have a motion, do you have a second? By Alderman Casadus, any questions? Roll call, please.
Just, once again, I just have an issue with, you know, when I took this job, I said we start looking at expenses, I just have an issue with adding additional expenses. I know the chief says it's $11,000 for the rest of this year. I personally think this should be something we should look at at the beginning of next year, when we have a better idea where our revenues are versus expenses.
You have a motion, second? Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
No.
Bellato, no. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
No.
Donahue, no. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
Until we get some vehicle stickers, collect these vehicle stickers, and collect some more money, I'm not agreeing with Mr. Clinker, I'm gonna say no.
Cantello Zelman, no. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
No.
Clinker, no.
It needs eight, just to pass that motion fails, you need eight, because this would require a majority of the City Council. You do not have a sufficient, more, more motion, three bar attendants.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes. Under new business, Chief Rita advised the floor inside of Fire Station Two is going to be repaired. The weight of the engine is causing the cement floor to crack. Alderman Johnson would like to commend the Fire Department on a good job on the house fire at 2946 140th Street. Under the Police Department, Officer Chigurri remains off with a duty-related injury. Probationary police officers Rodriguez and Fox completed their training with the Illinois State Police Academy and have begun the field training program. On June 20, on June 20, interviews for deputy chief were conducted. Money from the Police Department in June was collected was $75,953.28. There was a total of 2,695 incidents recorded in June. 1,321 were calls of service, and 1,037 were self-initiated incidents. There were 37 firearms recovered in June. Under old business for the Police Department, there was no update on the AC repairs. Alderman Carr advised that residents were still upset on the saving of parking spaces. Chief Arzab said residents can move whatever is saving the spot, but if the resident doesn't feel comfortable moving the items, to give the Police Department a call and they will come out and remove it. It was asked if there is an actual non-emergency number for police available. Residents have been complaining that they call 911, and it takes a while for anyone to show up. Excuse me. Chief Arzab stated to keep the liability off of the city to just call 911. Alderman Carr stated that nothing has been posted about lost dogs on the Blue Island Police Facebook page since February 1st. The MDTs will be possibly installed in the squads by the end of July. Under new business, National Night Out is August 6 at the Police Department. Alderman Johnson asked about rotating, rotating it to different locations in the city. Chief Arzab stated that she wants people to feel comfortable coming to the Police Department, and that's why it's held there. There was no Alderman concerns. And a motion to adjourn was made at 6:38 by Alderman Carr and seconded by Alderman Clinker. All were in favor. Our next meeting is August 20th, at 6:00 p.m.
Thank you very much. Municipal Services Committee?
Oh, that'll be me. Meeting was held July 19, July 9 at 6:00 p.m. Present were Mike Marzal, Eric Alvarez, Betty Harmeyer, Bob Jackson, Alderman Meck, Alderman Slattery, Alderman Rita, Alderman Fairwood, and Alderman Carr. Present as guests were residents David Johnson and Carol DePaes Green. Under Citizens Concerns, Carol DePaes Green asked if Cochran Street would be repaved this year, as it has not been repaved in 30 years. She was told that it is not on the shortlist for this year. David Johnson asked if there was a maintenance program such as crack ceiling in place for recently paved streets, including Union Street. Eric Alvarez said there is. Under Public Works, Jim Poulster was on vacation. Monthly report was sent out from Public Works. There was discussion regarding permit parking only on the streets east of the Rock Island Line Station. Mike Marzal said he would look into the previous no parking ordinance and report to the committee in August. Four handicap parking signs for residents were approved. Under the Water Department, Betty Harmeyer gave her monthly report. Mike Marzal stated that the Pose and Water Connection proposal was being drawn up. It was requested that the proposal be given to Dave Meyer to review the financial impact on the city. Under the Rec Center, Bob Jackson gave his monthly report. Bob Jackson presented a quote by Crawford Roofing for an annual maintenance contract for the roof of the Rec Center. There was discussion about the warranty given when the roof was first installed. A motion to approve by Alderman Slattery, second by Alderman Rita. Alderman Fairwood abstained from the vote. The vote was four ayes, one abstention, and the motion carried. Contract was forwarded to the Finance Committee for review. Bob Jackson presented a quote for additional cameras at the Rec Center. There was discussion about whether they would be feasible with the 2019 appropriations. The quote was sent to Finance Committee for financial consideration. No report from the golf course. Robinson Engineering, Eric Alvarez gave an update on ongoing projects. There was a discussion of the list of potential projects as reported by Robinson Engineering. The committee chose Edison as the first project using $200,000 in appropriations. Mr. Alvarez explained there may or may not be cost overrun, so the committee felt that this was a good choice. The runner-up depended on the $150,000 promised by the state of Illinois was Francisco. The committee chose to complete both these streets as funds allowed. Motion made by Alderman Meck, second by Alderman Rita. Alderman Fairwood abstained. The vote was four ayes, one abstention, and the motion carried. According to Mr. Alvarez, there is the potential to also do high street if other projects come in under budget. There was a motion to adjourn by Alderman Slattery, second by Alderman Meck. Motion carried. The meeting was adjourned at 6:55. The next meeting is August 13 at 6:00 p.m. And in reference to the referendum...
Resolutions?
Yes, sorry. I'd like, a motion for a resolution approving and authorizing a contract with Green Plum for landscaping maintenance. That's for the landscaping for the, the Metropolitan Water Recreation Gardens they put up on the northeast corridor.
All right, there's a motion, is there a second? By Alderman Hawley. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Alexander.
Aye.
Alexander, aye. Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato, aye. Casadus.
Aye.
Casadus, aye. Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue, aye. Hawley.
Aye.
Hawley, aye. Hill.
Aye.
Hill, aye. Cantello Zelman.
No.
Cantello Zelman, no. Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery, aye. Clinker.
Aye.
Clinker, aye. Eight ayes, one no, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Anything else, Alderman?
I think you've heard enough for me.
Thank you.
I'm done.
Judiciary Committee?
We didn't-
Nope, okay. What's your next meeting, Neil?
August 30th.
No, it's the, it's Wednesday, the second Wednesday.
No, that's Community Development meeting someone's, uh-
So this way the public is aware of it?
It's 24th.
The Wednesday?
Yeah.
Third Wednesday is 24th, so August.
So what day is it?
I think it's August 21st.
The third Wednesday is August 21st.
Alright. Thank you. Any Aldermanic announcements or comments? Go ahead, Alderman.
Alderman Bellato just turned 21 on Sunday, so I'd just like to wish him happy birthday. Happy birthday, Fred.
Anyone else has a birthday?
Oh, no.
Uh, Alderman, go ahead.
Um, I have good news. Like I said, every meeting I'm gonna bring up the vehicle stickers because it drives me crazy, are the, um, city stickers. And, uh, Mr. Royzer will tell them.
Yeah, last year, the, the same period last year to the same period this year. Uh, last year was 10,655 sold. This year, 10,736, so a net gain of 81 as of the 22nd of July compared to the same period last year.
And we're gonna be doing the sweep, correct, Chief, in August. You're gonna do the sweep of Blue Island, so we get some more stickers.
And just as a reminder to the seniors, you only get one $5 city sticker. Not two, not three, not four. So I've heard that come down to this clerk's office where they say, "Well, I'm entitled to more than one." I says, "No, just one." So let's make it clear. One $5 city sticker for the senior.
And that, that, just to make clear, they're parked in the driveway. That's still a ticket.
Correct. Oh, yeah?
They can see it from the street.
You can see it from the street. That's a ticket.
Because we do a lot of walking and there's a lot of people out there with no stickers.
Uh, anybody else? Go ahead.
I just, the clerk can probably read it better than I, just so we can put it out there. The ordinance in effect for 2:00 a.m., do you want to just pretty much give a synopsis of what that is?
For the vehicle stickers?
Yeah.
The, every, any vehicle parked on the city streets in the city of Blue Island between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m. must have a City of Blue Island vehicle sticker.
So if they have a city sticker, vote for us, they'll get a ticket?
That's correct.
Just wanna make sure we keep reminding people that. We should probably put that in a-
Use the- Sure, I can put that in the message.
Yeah.
You know, my son just got out of the Navy. Within 30 days, and he's got Virginia license plates until he, but he's been in a couple weeks, I have to park in my driveway and I have to park in the street.
And you know, as we're talking about me in the, in the letter, I mean, I just found out recently that you need a dog tag or you need a $5. Some people don't even know that.
And, and, and you just, you just, you gotta know and you think the clerk, uh, give more information like that.
And maybe he's-
You have, you need to have updated vaccination, vaccination.
And I think when, uh, when somebody went in there recently, the last couple months, there were only 22 people, you know, purchased these. And there's a lot more dogs than 22.
One of them is my dog.
There's one N.O. card registered. There's, uh, more than 22 dogs.
Oh, yeah?
So maybe that could be in the notes also. And it's only $5, but there's a lot of dogs out there.
Let me just throw this out as a comment. I know it was brought up by one of the Alderman, by the fireworks. Either Judiciary or Public Health and Safety or a combination, the city council has to address the fireworks situation in Blue Island. It has gotten out of hand.
We had a lot of complaints.
We actually had a minor discussion about it. Um, Chief RZAB said they're going to be rather aggressive next year on fireworks, you know?
Oh, yeah? I'll, I'll, I'll give you as a one personal note. On Irving Street where I grew up and where my parents still have a home, as you know, it's right by the lumber company. When you have certain residents and even neighbors and even family members who blow off fireworks close to that lumber company, it's insane. And then when you tell me, "What, I'm gonna have you arrested," and they don't believe me, and it's done, sorry. And it's done. Okay? So it needs to be addressed because there was also a memo or an email from the business on Irving that they found large remnants of fireworks on top of their roof on Irving and, um, what's the company? What is it? It was the, uh, Bronson.
Bronson.
Bronson had found large pieces of debris from fireworks on top of the roof. So imagine that. So this is an issue that needs to be addressed throughout the whole city. Besides the disturbance that they commit at 1:00, 2:00, and 3:00, and 4:00 o'clock in the morning. It has to stop. Go ahead.
So in, uh, Public Health and Safety meeting, Chief, you can, I'm just gonna read part of what she wrote in her, in her actual report. She stated how many complaints were received and one of the things she noted was, "Moving forward, a campaign to inform residents of ordinances related to possession of fireworks is planned for next year." Specifically, residents will be made aware of strict of ordinance enforcement and the 7500 penalty related to possession." So I think Chief's already working on it.
That's correct.
You know, um, so-
I mean, if they want, and I'll take this, if you wanna use Irving Avenue as an example, close to that lumber company or any other business close to a lumber company or pallet company as a pilot program, I say go ahead and do it. Go ahead.
Mayor, I would like to thank, um, Chief RZAB and the Blue Island Police Department. Had a tragedy incident on my block on my neighbor and they did a wonderful job. They had the whole incident under control and they did, and it was shocking. I just want to thank you.
Very professional department, both of them, fire, all of them, first responders, homeland security, everyone here in the city. Any other comments? Because it's gonna be a long... Go ahead.
Kevin, you have me up. The, the golf course is having something this weekend.
Oh, yes. ESPN on Saturday.
They asked me, I'm trying to find it.
You can win, you can win a chance to walk, uh, inside of the road at the Indiana Championship at the Dining Country Club this Saturday from, I think it's 10 to 2. And they'll be getting ESPN personality there, ESPN Radio, 1,000 personality. Teddy wasn't sure who it was, but that's this Saturday at the United States Golf Club.
Fred?
I would like to remind the Aldermen, um, and, and inform the audience that, uh, s- school season's, uh, upon us and the Blue Island Partnership is, uh, hosting a school supply drive where they will be, uh, accepting, uh, school supplies and other, uh, needed materials for, uh, our area children to, you know, have a successful school year. So any donations can be dropped off in the Memorial Park Field House anytime between now and August 12th, or 16th. Any donations are appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anybody else? We need to go into executive session to discuss any litigation in Harrow versus Blue Island and Affordable Housing versus Blue Island. Have a motion?
I could add one other item. In a closed session, what would be the acquisition of real property in the second? In a closed session, probable or imminent litigation.
Alright. Motion by Alderman, uh, Slattery, second. By Alderman Holly. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? For Alderman Casadus, who have a second, by Alderman Alexander. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Would you like to know the rules?
Alexander?
Here.
Alexander, here. Bellato?
Here.